Hey, good evening and welcome to September the 11th Monday 2021 Scottsburg Common Council here in the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. Welcome to everyone, welcome to everyone. We're going to call a meeting to order and we begin our meeting with prayer and with the pledge of allegiance. So let's rise and get clear of the need. Father, we come before you and today in Scottsburg, Indiana just to thank you for the gift of, from your hand at this day, Father. And it has been a joy to experience this day with you and to, and with so many others, Father. And we just thank you for your goodness, for your grace, for your mercy, for your love and your kindness, Father, and for the peace that you give. So Father, I pray for Scottsburg. I pray for your presence. I pray, Father, that we have unity in our city. We pray, Father, for great ideas and discernment. We pray for wisdom, Father, and for a loving heart and for a servant's attitude, Father, for all of us who stand up here and for our citizens as well, Father. And we go forward, Father, as a community in Indiana that just the light just shines from. So Father, may our country, may the light shine from it. So we pray for our leaders of Washington DC, Father, and for wisdom and discernment for them as well. We love you. We pray for your presence in Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic through which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have on our agenda this evening is a roll call from our clerk treasurer, Jan Murphy.
May I, amen?
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Phil Hugland.
Here.
Chris Manns.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rhodes.
Here. We are all fully vetted here, so wonderful. Next, we have is the approval of the minutes of August 9th, 23rd, and 30th. Yeah, was the motion for all of them?
I'll make the motion. Consider it all three.
Christian has made his motion. Is there questions, comments, concerns? I'm sorry, I need a second before I say question. Sorry about that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's not much of seconds now. Is there questions, comments, concerns? Sorry about that. Hearing none, all people say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing we have is a public comment section for, I guess we're going to go to public comment or go to public hearing. Public comments, the city of Scottsburg council accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name on the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Their remarks should focus on issues that will be used to target city officials, our city employees, collective officials. Would anyone like to come forward this evening? One, two, one, twice, complete. Now let's go again to our public hearing on the water rate. We had the first reading last time on ordinance 2021-23, ordinance submitting the schedule of rates and charges collected by the Scottsburg Department of Water Works, establishing new rates and charges for the Scottsburg Water Department, Water Works, and other matters connected.
It was introduced at the last meeting. We actually did not.
So we're now opening this up to the public so the council can hear your concerns and answer your questions. Who would like to come first? Does the press want to come first?
No.
Do we have any questions, comments about our, for, this is our public hearing for your Water Works. There was before, the discussion was a 3% rate in, in the Water Works, beginning in December, or beginning in January of '22. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close it. Okay? We're closed, all the public here. Now we have first reading, so, on this ordinance, so, wait, four here. Depending on if you have a public hearing on the budget. What do you want?
So we, we're fine, we'll stick to this. At the last meeting, we had some discussion on how to potentially amend and have language to set an automatic renewal each year. But we, the council, in coordination with the Department of Water Works, would review capital costs, revenues, et cetera, and make a decision on an annual basis if there would be inquiries. That language was added into Section 1. I know Dave is here tonight. I think Water, I think they're on board with that language. So that's, if Dave has anything to add to that, but that's the only change is in that area of Section 1 and the corresponding changes on Exhibit A to reflect that that would just be a rate change for 2022 only at this point.
Does all council understand that? Because we're not making this an automatic multi-year ordinance. So, so what is council's pleasure? Do you want to go forward with the recommendation that the Water Board put forth at a 3% rate increase?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the Water Board for their work on this. I think the, the reality is for all of our utilities, the necessary evil is that we do have to raise rates, continue operations, and continue the excellent customer service that we have for our users. So I had a great conversation with Todd Harder, the head of the Water Department. There are some upcoming expenses that would be needed with this 3% increase. I think adding the adjustment with next year 3%, with all the uncertainty in the city with potential of some new homes and some new development, I think it would be great to look at it on an annual basis and adjust from then. There could be less of an increase or could be more of an increase depending on what's needed, but I think this is written as I would like to see it, and I would support this as well.
Okay. Let me make a comment as well, is that in this, this administration also, they needed a new cat bathroom. Their other one's about 20 years old and just didn't have the hydraulic pressure anymore, so we were able to purchase one of those. We just recently also purchased a new water jetting machine as well, so both of those were, you know, a little under $200,000. So we have, have the funds, and that's the one thing, that's one of the reasons that we need a small increment increase, not only for the chemicals going up, but also for aging equipment as well. Another thing we purchased was, we purchased two boxes, so if the guys get down in holes, they're eight feet tall, so that, that we can make a 16-foot depth cut and, and our people will be safe. So those are $9,000 apiece as well. So there's been another $18,000 there. Another thing we're doing is we're looking at new software so that, you know, these, these new meters are going to fit in nicely there. So just to let you know from this side what's going on as well. So did you make the motion?
I'm going to motion through first reading.
First reading, we have a second.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, it's been quite a while since we've had a rate increase on that water utility as well, so, I think Dave spoke to that last meeting, it's been several years. So just to point that out, it's much needed. It's been a while since we've had an increase.
And I think for this council to recognize that it is important to have a small incremental rate increase annually, you know, something 1%, 2%, 3%, you know, where it's not pretty anybody, you know, 30 cents, 50 cents, a dollar a quart, whatever, so, I'll second. Bring man a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all people say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? unanimous?
Just increase the rules and you'll optimize them.
You came, I don't think there's no necessarily rush on doing that.
Because it's not going into effect on January of '22.
I don't think even the increased rates as, the way it's written, as far as the line types would change until next year. So I don't think there's any rush.
Okay. You want to go next to the public hearing on the budget or do you have to?
It's up to you.
We have to time it at 6:30.
Budget, budget. Okay, let's go, let's go open the council up, the public hearing from the public on our budget. So anyone here who would like to address any issues or have questions to council about your city's budget, now is the time to be heard. Rise and speak.
I just have one question. Does your 2022 budget reflect any salary increases?
We have, yeah, we have finalized that, yeah, we don't, we'll be introducing our salary on the next meeting.
For, for the record, that's Marty Randall with the Scott County Sheriff.
Right.
And asking about the salaries. I don't think the salary is in this.
We don't have an ordinance for that.
Excellent question, thank you very much. Anyone else? Questions on the budget? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close it. Kind of like the last bit, you know? We're closed, we're closed. Okay, you want to then?
We have to do the first reading tonight, because then they can't do anything tonight, and then we will be adopting after an op-ed at the next meeting, so.
So do we have a motion then to accept the first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Remains makes the motion to accept the first reading on the budget ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second. I want to thank Ann Tish and the crew for all the hard work it was done.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. I heard that too. It was great.
Yes, yes, and it was good to work with all of you this year too, and I will say on behalf of the department heads, I think they really appreciated that one afternoon that we met and, you know, wanted to hear some of their concerns.
I think that should be an annual.
I agree. I think that's an important.
I'll second.
Yes, well, we'll, we could sure do that.
Okay. Just don't let us forget.
Don't worry, this rolls around quicker every year as we figure that out.
Jan and her team just does an excellent job. So we have a first and a second. Is there any questions or comments, concerns? Hearing none, all people say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? unanimous, thank you.
Thank you all.
Now to go to the real hearing.
It's up to you. I think it makes sense.
You have anything else, Jan?
No.
Okay, Mary Jo, we're going to drop down to, A, in the new businesses, Resolution 2021-R-10, preliminary declaratory, declaratory resolution designating an economic revitalization area and approving a tax abatement. That was in your, your email, and this is for EPC. Mary Jo, do you have anyone on the line that would like to speak to it, or do you want to just hit the highlights?
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and jump right in here and give a couple shout-outs. I would like to thank the city for their assistance with this. You have a Class 18 over there, Mayor, and they have been nothing but helpful, so I really truly appreciate that and so just want to say, I would like, you know, also thank the council for their consideration of the events that would be coming before you today, and also representation from EPC, Keith Boyle, who I think is in your presence, correct?
Hey, how are you, Keith?
How are you?
Can you give me a shout-out, Keith?
He said hello, Mary Jo.
Hello, 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 everyone. And, you know, a pleasure to work with all of you, and I really don't have anything else to say, but few words would be appreciated.
Are you coming live to us from the great state, the Buckeye State of Ohio?
I am not. I am here from the great state of Indiana.
What a deal, what a deal. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
I'm sorry to interrupt, this is Matt Hall with 1-7 Indiana, and I did want to thank Keith and EPC for considering Scottsburg for this project, which worked for us to be only an exchange of an offload retention. I know that one of the, or one of the, the choices they had was certainly to do a disqualification in Ohio, so we certainly appreciate EPC's consideration of doing this project in Scottsburg. So thank you, Keith, for being here.
I can hear you, and thank you all of you for your hospitality and your kindness and for giving us the opportunity to do business in Scottsburg. Absolutely. Keith came up to help us, and we had a great chat, and he's here to make things run so it's profitable for all. It's a win for EPC, it's a win for Scottsburg, it's a win for the employees, and it's a win for our community. So we thank you very much, thank you very much. So, let's look then at passing Resolution 2021-R-10. Do I have a motion to go forward, ask presented, for your tax abatements on a five-year, on a five-year term?
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Show up for real seconds, any questions, comments, concerns?
I would add, since this hasn't been thrown out there yet, this is a 5.6 million in manufactured equipment, $120,000 in IT equipment, and an approximation of 11.5 million in additional salaries. This is a personal profit abatement, so that's the hard numbers on that.
And that abatement goes in a five-year term, 20% for each of us, so. So it gives then a head start, kind of like running track, how you have, have them staggered after. So right now, you're in the end lane, you've got to stagger way after. So, any other questions, comments, before we move on? Okay, hearing none, all people say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign? unanimous, Keith. Mary Jo, thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
Man, it's always enjoyed, buddy.
So Mary Jo, Matt, this has been a notice for a, will be noticed for a public hearing on the 27th, and then that will be ripe for a final approval. That's the next council meeting, September 27th, at 6:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, next, would you like, thank you, would you like to make a speech or anything? No. A few words. But a lot of skill sets, a tremendous amount of skill sets, so thank you so very much, thank you so very much. Okay, then let's go back up to number two, Maitlin McNeely with 4H Youth Development Educator.
Okay, we have some handouts for you. This is Savannah Watson, she's one of my team teachers for 4H.
I have the comms.
She's going to pass these out. We just wanted to come and try and give you an update what COVID was doing. And then our, our 4H program either starts on October 1st, so I've been trying to go to the schools and promoting that. And then we were just, I think I came last year, maybe it was two years ago before COVID, and just talked about the things that we were doing, and then we were just asking if you had any money in your budget and you wanted to give some money to 4H for, to help with kids for scholarships and things, because I know times are kind of tough with parents losing their jobs and different things going on. We currently get $4,000 from the county council in our lineup budget at work, and then our 4H council, they do fundraising and stuff that they haven't been able to do as much because COVID, we used to have a roadblock, and we did different things that we haven't been able to do the past year and a half. So I guess we're just going to give you these so you kind of knew what we were doing. Savannah's a team teacher, you want to talk about what you guys did for, just about the the calm down jars and that one?
So we learned about how to make different, like, things for, like, all ages, little kids, teens, and adults, and we, it helps teach back to all kinds of age groups, and it's been fun and learning.
My mental health. So tell them about the calm down.
So we take a plastic bottle and we put a little bit of water glue and some, like, sparkles and stuff to make it interesting for the kids, and then whenever you shake it, that's like their emotions, like, just getting really shaken up, and then once it calms down, it's like a few relaxing.
So they did, like, a mini 4H workshop with this, they've done day camps and different things, and then they taught our volunteers, 4H is a volunteer-led program, so we have 60-plus volunteers anytime, and so they did, like, a mind, mindfulness wheel, if that was called, to, to, to the adults, and then they did that to their peers that were older kids too, so.
Did you guys, you guys make calls as well, and people told about?
Yeah, we did the pillows with the Y and Z Center camp to teach them about community service, and then there were 78 pillows, I think, that were then donated to the police department, so when they go and pick up youth, they give them a pillow, you know, just kind of comes with them, give them something to take their mind off of what's going on at that moment. So we do, and then they're on this, this, she's also a junior leader, so this infographic right here talks about how they, they got 9,104 cans donated, and then we put those around the community in the nine different food boxes. It took 34 hours, which was a value of 864.62, and we also donated some to the clearing house, so, this stuff that we did, it was six weeks, so after six weeks, what we couldn't get in the food boxes, we took those there. So they do a lot of, I don't know if everything's on here, whatever, what else? The homeless care packages was with this. And we worked with Indiana Military Team Council to provide care packages for veterans. You guys did things do at the DHI this spring. So we, they just do all kinds of really cool things. We do angel trees and so.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is wonderful for Scott County youth going forward like this, this is just awesome. Mr. President, do you have money in your budget for this?
No.
On council budget?
We, we just passed the budget on per reading, so.
No, I mean, this, this year's budget.
Oh, this year's?
This year's budget. Sure, they, they, they want, they want the money now.
I don't know.
I mean, does any council like, you have a budget, the council's budget wants 40,000 to 11?
Yeah, we had, I mean, we had to know what, you know, what we've spent, or, you know, I don't know.
We haven't spent much.
Well, I still, I'm not saying we have.
I can tell you this, I, I spent a lot of time in District 2 elementary schools and I've seen 4H projects that the kids do, and it involves a lot of, and have other things to do, or any other that to do. And I know COVID probably is, like, everything else, it's really, really scaled back what you're able to do, but.
Yeah, so last year, I wasn't able to own the schools at all. This year, I'm actually at Grace Christian and Scottsburg Elementary, like, every day this week except for Friday, so they really let me come back in and start going again. I'm just wearing my mask and follow, you know, all the rules that they're following. And then last year, our enrollment was down about 10 or 11%, but across the state, it was down like 20 or 22%. So that's good for Scott County that we were able to keep, you know, I mean, we weren't as down as much, but we just try, hopefully this year will be better, since we went and had the fair life normal. That's not all 4H is, and that's every time, I was at school today, it's a fifth grader, Scottsburg Elementary School, and I'm like, I know, you see the animals, and you think, well, I live in town, so I can't be in 4H, and so we did the calm down jars today with them. And so I tried to talk, we have Legos, we have photography, we have woodworking, banking, she does ducking, too, I mean, so even if you just, we have all kinds of stuff, it's not just cows and chicks.
The kids were always very proud of the, the projects on the school.
Yeah.
I haven't mentioned it to them, and they were always proud of this, you know, something that they did that's on, that's on exhibit, and especially those who won an award.
Yeah.
So I, I, I appreciate what you do, I think it's, it's a good purpose for our kids, and I sort of go by table and see if we have some funding that could be sent to them.
County council's giving 4,000, so maybe next meeting, we can come back with your budget to see where you're at.
We'll take a look.
Can people look at it?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
I did, I did.
Or, do you?
What's involved in my?
It's, this year, like I said, it's down like 10, 10 or 11%, but we had, I just looked before we left the office, and it's like right around 200 or 210. So, and that doesn't include, you know, all the school stuff that I go do, all those kids, like, to me are 4H members, even though they're not a paid member, that's just 200 paid members, you know? But I'm doing this week 71 of the calm down jars at Scottsburg Elementary, and then I'm doing a reology at Grace Christian right now, so, I mean, we're really starting to roll and reaching a lot of kids that we normally don't reach, so.
That's awesome.
And like I said, October 1st is when we roll out the new year, so hoping to, you know, I mean, to raise our numbers up again.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is Chief Zellers, trick or treat, October 29th, Chief, you're up, lady.
I just need the council's approval to have trick or treat that night out of the road. I've got a phone call from Austin, Chief Police Sean Herr, he's a mayor, talked to him. We traditionally never had trick or treat on Sunday, which it falls this year. We've never had trick or treat on Saturday because of scheduling conflicts and being kind of a busy night. A few years ago, it was the first time we actually did it on a Friday, and everything went really well. I've also talked to that haunted downtowns up in Scottsburg, I believe, and that group, I've been told, because COVID kind of fell apart, but the, I believe the chamber's taking that on this year. I'm sorry, I'm visiting commissioner, I'm sorry. And I spoke with them, and they're going to try to put something together for the same night. I spoke to the sheriff, good, and he's good with that also, so something like everybody's on board for October 29th. Now, we all do, do a little bit at different times. In Scottsburg, I've always just said 6:00, 8:30, because I know between 8:30 and 9:00, they're going to probably still be out if we get home, so 6:00, 8:30 is the time that I also ask. So the, the council has to, to make that decision, that's my recommendation.
And this would include the downtown in Scottsburg, and I believe Austin does the same thing, is that correct, the downtown here?
I don't, I don't have a downtown.
I know they have something, do they have something going on, Mark?
They have, the Austin Lions always does something at their depot where they need, and then the fire department always has that open as well as county hall, so.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't spoken to the chief, Rich, I apologize, I forgot, forgot about that, but I'm sure it'd be fun.
So Austin said for that night already?
Austin, Austin's waiting for us to approve.
They need tomorrow.
Yeah, they're waiting for us, we'd like to do it. I think there's been once or twice in the great many years I've worked here that there've been different things. And this is just the council, and I hope you guys maybe think I'm far-fetched here, but this is one of the biggest decisions we'll have to make. You think I'm lying, we'll get more calls on this, we'll have to check the weather channel for at least one or two weeks out to make sure it's not going to rain or snow that day.
We'll draw the moisture going inside.
The earlier we can get this out, it's, it's better for me.
I'll move to approve that. Chris Albertson moves on first, Christian Evans second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all people say aye. Propose like sign? Pass. Can we motion to suspend the rules and move forward? Well, it'll be a great tree then, and I know that people are looking forward to it. We have a COVID-19 meeting every week at 1:00 PM with all county entities, or whoever would like to join there, and so I know this has been brought, so far we still have ring line, so, yeah, so. Okay, next thing we have is the first reading of the 2021-27 ordinance to adopt rental policy of rates for the Mid-America Science Park.
Attorney, I, I, there were some questions that came up. I think it'd be good if we table this until next meeting, and, and are there specific things we need to discuss tonight?
Yes, yes.
So what, what do we need?
I personally think that we just needed in the ordinance, the specifics as to what, what you want to see done on the, on the room rates, the deposits, how much they are to be. Tonight at Water Works, they discussed waiting fees, who pay, you know, I just would like to see council put all of that in the ordinance.
So the amounts of deposits and those kinds of things?
Yes, yes.
And then a note?
And to just, to be very specific in, like, when I asked what was a full or the, you know, the rate, yeah.
There was a, there was a minimum and a maximum rate?
Yes.
In the, in the pricing sheet that we saw, but just, you said that goes back to if it's a nonprofit organization that, that we could allow them to use.
That's what the discussion was in, in April of last year, where you guys were looking at it, the minimum being the nonprofit rate and the maximum being the for-profit rate.
And as I recall, there were only two rates that we would change, that's classroom rate from 40 to 100.
There are a couple of rooms that I would like to talk to you guys about and make a recommendation for a higher charge because of it's way, way low, in my opinion.
It what?
It's way, there's a couple of rooms that are extremely low for the cost that I would like to recommend.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's tape the next couple of weeks, or what I like is take the next couple of weeks and, and have what, what your feelings are on those, and if they're training center rooms and, you know.
Let's, let's, let's tape the next couple of weeks, or what I like is take the next couple of weeks and, and add what, what your feelings are on those, and, and if they're training center rooms, and, you know, get with my, make sure she home board that.
Yeah, once we meet tonight, that's what I would like Chuck, for you to do, meet with the mayor, because he indicated today he wanted to do something on room rates. We will just, you know, but I would like that specifically defined in the ordinance, so everyone's on the same page.
Deposit, you said it was another thing?
Yes.
And is that something that?
They, somebody made the, that they were charged the, the price of.
Yeah, well, on leases, we charge the equivalent to the first, our one month rent is what we did, that's in on the banquet hall we had. We have been charging deposits, five hundred dollar refundable deposit in the, if they have food, or they don't have food in there, two hundred and fifty dollar refundable deposit if they do not have food in the banquet halls. What we had been charging as a little, so that would be something.
So these deposits, I guess they came to, to the banquet area, the event center, that they do the training centers, is that?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
I don't know if we shared anything on the training center.
Well, that's what, that's why, you know, my focus has mainly been, and I, I had to talk about the event center part, but anyway, we can.
And we do that because of if there was damage to be done to the walls, if they was put something on the walls, red stains on the carpet, or for some reason, if something must have happened and they were hit that screen, and put a rip in that screen, to be able to at least recruit some money.
And you said something about waiving the rate, does that come before the city council?
That's Board of Works, I think.
It's Board of Works, but again, I want to make sure.
I just want to make sure that somebody's voting to do that.
Yeah, and I, and I want to get your counsel on this, because, you know, we have two coming up right away that we made a decision on tonight. One was Steve Satter, Right For Cure, and that's a huge thing, and, and I think they have six folks that they're gonna give all the money to. In other words, this is divided up, and it's very worthwhile, and I was told tonight that Jessica said two of those folks last year passed away. And, and so it's, gives them funds for money for food, to do something for child, you know. But, but then it comes down to others, I said, let's, let's table this, because I need to know their mindset, and we have United Way, who would like to have, they haven't, you had the, I believe it's a, was it Community Foundation, what, who was it?
The Chamber of Congress.
Chamber of Congress was another.
And then Scott County Emergency Management, so.
So, well, to me, they are somewhat, they are a nonprofit as well, but we still have expenses. So, you know, it's like, I guess I'm seeking your council's mind on how much we should charge. I want to have Scottsburg personnel out there during that time, should something come up, we have, we have city personnel there.
And I think it goes back to the minimum rate, I mean, that's usually what Jessica suggested we establish that. So that there's not, and in my opinion, there's, there's not a lot of discussion, if you're, if you're a nonprofit and you want to use the facility, then there's the rate, and that, in my mind, that bare covers are overhead. Because you're right, we do have expenses, and I'm a big believer that there needs to be some city representative out there doing all of that, so that's an expense, so. But, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's good, good members of the community that we should, we should probably tend to keep that cost as low as possible, and then, on, on the other end, they can be, probably make a little money.
Yeah.
So, and, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, well, I, I'm like, I'm, I'm with you, I think that, you know, it's nonprofit, we have a nonprofit rate, nonprofits should pay that rate. And it should be a rare thing that we waive that fee, because if, if we're gonna waive for every nonprofit, then why have a rate? I mean, and who determines which one we waive?
Oh, well, and, and that is Board of Works, that, that could be those.
I would agree, but like, you know, an emergency, like what we did with Henryville High School. Yeah, but I, I get all of that, but, you know, maybe the Right For The Cure, but I mean, a, a chamber event, I don't know that a regular chamber event should be just waived. Nothing against the chamber, just if, if my church wanted to use it, I, I don't think they should get a free.
And that's what I wanted to hear, I wanted to see what your.
That's just my opinion.
That's my opinion. Christian?
I second that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree. Chris, okay, okay. There was, we had two tonight that I did waive, one was the Steve Satter, the other one, both these arrived away. We have the community coming in here from Floyd, Clark, and Harrison County, coming up on a bus. And basically, actually gonna come up there, I guess meet, because the bus is gonna pick them up here. It's basically a place just to come in, sit down, hear a little bit of the spiel from the mayor about Scottsburg, and then they're gonna get, we're gonna take a tour of the Grand Central Square, then they're gonna get on a bus, and they're going for the rest of it, they're gonna go out to Hardy Lake, they're gonna go to Bill Farm, they're gonna see different things, Joe Gibson's going to, our local historian is gonna, is going to handle all of these things. So, to me, it's just a place to meet, so I see.
I would tell you my feeling, that the Board of Works has the authority to waive fees, as, as the Board of Works seeks fit, you're not gonna hear me complain or second guess it. I mean, I, you, you can, as we do here, you, you, you know what the request is, you know what's behind the request, and if Board of Works wants to waive a fee, then fine.
And I want you to know that, you know, I, I know that we need to, we need to limit the red ink, and we certainly have things we're gonna bring before you that I think that we can get into the black and set, so this is coming down, but anyways.
But I'm saying that if it's Right For Cure, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's a great, great community event, and it serves a great purpose, and, you know, I, if I was on Board of Works, I would have voted to waive the fee on that, or, or things such as that.
And it was against, you know, for, maybe a good fee, so. But, okay, well, thank you very much, that's, that was much needed, I have one more thing here, but first, I think we have the discussion on the food trucks. So let's talk about food trucks. We have several folks here, so, at this point, counselor, do you want to have an open session for people to come up and talk to council? Do you want to have a cap, ask a draft?
All questions. The fervor of the council, I'm handling that.
Mr. President?
I do not care if they, if they're individuals who want to express opinions, I'm not here.
Okay, if you're here tonight with a food truck concern, now's your time to address council. Anyone? Well, let's let council then go forward with, with some of these ideas then, because there was a food truck.
There, there was an issue with the food truck, or had, you know, had it been an issue with the food truck on the south side of the square, and I, I don't think anyone, that, that is surprised anyone. It, it kind of took me back to our discussion about food trucks last year, a year before, kind of gets away, but we, we brought this up before. And I don't want to, to get into the regulation of food trucks and those kinds of things, but the, the question I brought up is, does any individual who has a food truck have the right to set up a food truck on city property or city controlled property? And, you know, while this, there was a major issue with, with this particular truck, I, I asked the question, what would happen if, you know, a semi-sized food truck pulled up on the east side of the square, and walked off the whole side of the square, and it's shot? You know, we, we don't have anything that I'm aware of to prohibit or to control that, so.
Chuck, I think, and this is, this is my opinion on that too. Where he walked, where that food truck was positioned, over on the south side of the square, there was maybe five or six places he was there, I don't know what time he got there, but it didn't interfere with any other business going on. The thing I've noticed going around the square, when you get along about where Houston Thompson, in that area, that's about the end of the parking on that south side of the square. Whatever, whoever is sitting there for a few hours, I don't really have a problem, if you had ten or fifteen trucks down there, that might be a problem. But the problem around that square is totally the food trucks. When you've got merchants on the east side of the square, when their customers come in there, now I know this is a totally different thing, can't get to that because of the parking on that entire east side, they can't get into it. And it says two-hour parking. If, if that food truck, if a food truck is on the courthouse side of that street, is that city property or county controlled? If you park there, there isn't anybody parking there. One truck ain't, I don't think it's gonna make that big of a difference. And I think we're running out again, like we were at this time last year, this is the end of the season anyway. So, if you've got one truck sitting there, I don't have a problem with it. Couple of trucks in?
But can, can, if two trucks come, or three trucks come, can, can you say, well, now, now we're gonna run you off? I, I mean, that, that's, that's.
Right, and outside the square.
And, 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 and in response to your comment about the east side of the square, those are two-hour parking spaces, and they should be, they, they should be limited to that.
It's actually all around the entire alley, so.
That's what I'm saying, exactly, and, and the same with, with those spaces in, in front of the theater, those are two-hour spaces.
But if the truck is on the inside of that square, is that us, or is that the county?
I can answer that question, Mayor.
Speak up, Jess.
The parking spots around the square have always had to be approved by the council to shut those down, whether it be the inside of the square or the outside. Those have always been controlled by the city council.
Well, that's, and that's my question, is obviously, discussion on food trucks last year revolved around regulations on private property. And we decided as a council against any unnecessary regulations on private property. Right For Cure just had the monster truck, I believe, about a month ago, they came to council and asked if they could park in front of the theater, and we approved that. In my opinion, I think food trucks on city property is a different animal than private property, and if a, if a food truck were once set up on city property, I think they would probably, just thinking out loud here, do the same thing that Satter did with Right For Cure. I don't know that if it was a situation to which it was a Friday evening, they came to us, you know, a week or two in advance, we would have a problem with it, but I don't know about this setting up on a normal Wednesday night, if that's gonna open up floodgates for five, six different food trucks around the square at a time. I would handle on a case-by-case basis on that front, I think that would probably need to be some sort of regulation on city property, so that we are aware of who's on our property at what time. But again, I, I don't know, as far as they came to us, asked for permission to do so, we would have a problem, at least I would have a problem, if we didn't, okay.
I agree, I don't know, if they would come, if someone would be there, wouldn't have a problem with the theater.
Josh sent a sample ordinance that I read through, and, and I, I liked it. And I think it covers the things that we need to cover, I guess the only question I would have, and Josh, it, it stated that if you wanted to set up a food truck on city property, that you have to give permission beforehand, which I think is what we're all after. But what does that look like? I mean, what, what's the process look like for getting permission, for granting, what's the, what's the process for seeking permission?
I would have to look and see what, this is from Fisher's.
And I, I would look for an answer right now, I'm just saying, you know, that's the only thing that I think we need to, in, in that ordinance, that we would kind of need to tie it up a little bit.
I would guess, similar, well, Christian just said that it would be a written request, the, the city, the Board of Works would hear, and approve, would be, I don't, how different, Fisher's may react to things, but that's generally would be my guess of how, if we have similar ordinance, it's how we would handle it, so I can look and see if they have any further guidance on our website, contact them.
Did anyone get a chance to look at the ordinance? Is there anything in there that, that you would object to? Can, can I ask then that we, we look at that before the next meeting, each of us, if there are questions or comments, let's kind of, let's kind of bring those, sort them, and then possibly consider this ordinance next meeting?
I think it's important that somebody makes a decision.
Exactly.
About somebody setting up on city property, just like the school, if, if it's a Friday night, and, and somebody wants to sell snow come to, come to school property for a football game, gosh, they've got to ask for permission, I mean, that's just, that's, that's a part of it, absolutely.
Because it, well, it's reliability reasons and nothing else.
Right.
So we're in table list and discussing?
Well, I think this was just a discussion tonight, you know, as far as I was concerned, but, but I, I liked what Josh.
I can go ahead and put this in our format.
Yeah, so a good one.
And kind of the highlights for the, the public, is it defines mobile concessions, generally be mobile food trucks or trailers. You're required to promptly display your county health department sticker, so there is no separate city sticker or clause. You should not interfere, free passage of pedestrians, twenty feet within intersection, you have to have permission from property owner, if you own private property, permission from the city, if you're on city property, comply with all local, state, federal rules, you are subject to inspection by the city fire department. All those inspections would be up to, at the discretion of the fire department. There's a penalty of a five hundred dollar fine for violation of the ordinance, that's how Fisher did it.
And there's no cost out there?
There is no, no cost.
No, so I'm not sure that we, five hundred dollars seems a little bit steep, to me, or, you know, for the cost of things, I don't know, we may have, have a tiered approach to that, thank you.
I think we just handle it the same way we do with, you know, a lot of others, and I think, you know, Chief, we asked him, I know we had the Christmas thing a couple of years ago, and business commission, and some other things, and it's kind of the same pattern. They come in, present to us what they're about to do, Chief, make sure it's okay on that end, and check all those boxes, and we just give approval, or deny, I think that's something.
And I'd like to see the two-tiered.
I agree.
You know, whether it's, you know, a hundred dollars, then two fifty, five hundred.
Whatever. Whatever our standard was.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly.
Is, is it possible to add this, this draft posted prior to the meeting?
Probably think so.
We can get it out of the finish that we did it.
But I know there, well, I, I like, I know John's here, that, like you, you said, you know, before we go on, Kevin, I don't, I don't, just want to read that you're here, but, you know, I don't want you to have any problem.
And I don't think it would affect Kevin, because he's usually set up on your property.
Well, but I, well, the only concern that I have on that, which, you know, I feel like we have enough talent on our council to probably take somebody's ordinance and use that as a base, and then tether it to Scottsburg, but, you know, when you're comparing Scottsburg to, say, Fisher's or Noblesville or somewhere like that, you know, I don't know, about twenty feet, I don't have a very, very big parking lot over there, you know, if you, maybe say twenty feet off of the road, or off of the intersection, you know, that can, that can impact me, not be able to set up on my own parking lot, that's one thing we came up with before. Or if you put a, a radius of an existing food establishment, even though I have my own food establishment, you know, I want to be able to use that as an extension of my business, build this for people.
This is just city property, and if it's on, if it's on your property, then this is just city property.
Right.
I mean, and, and I think that the reasoning behind that, I mean, it, obviously, you get a food truck right close to an intersection, and, you know, it, it places more dangers, but I, I, I don't think that affects you at all.
I, I don't think it would affect you, but I just wanted to hear your comments about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be interested in seeing the ordinance, you know, I think, I, I fully understand the, the private property versus public property, you know, as a taxpayer and so forth, I fully understand that, I understand needing to have permission before you set up a public property, that's nothing that, that would not be expected anyplace around. But one thing I do want to be clear on, with the trailer that, that's been in front of the theater, I mean, there is Indiana code on parking, as far as parking in spots and not blocking the travelway, or things of that nature, that, are, are we saying we want that to be allowed? That we want to make an exception for vendors to take up multiple spaces, or are we wanting?
I, I think, you know, some, some are gonna have, I mean, first of all, we're gonna have to seek permission to do that, and I, I just don't think it's, it's good practice to take up multiple parking spaces around the square. I mean, that's just my opinion, for, for me, I mean, we have other places where they, you know, they might be set up, but.
The example that, that I, I can picture in my head real easily, Kevin, you got the window on one side, if you pull into a parking spot, you could fit most parking spots, in theory, right? You fit a parking spot for the most part, and then if you were on, your, your window was on a sidewalk, people. And then if you were on, your window was on a sidewalk, people could walk up, and you're not necessarily interfering with any additional parking spots.
Well, myself personally, like my truck, my truck's about sixteen foot long. So if I was gonna park anywhere, like on a public area, I would probably, even if I pulled where I was gonna be servicing customers from the sidewalk.